All right, I'd like to call this regular board meeting to order. You all please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For please call again. Trustee Bowden?
Here.
Trustee Hudson?
Here.
Trustee Jones?
Here.
Trustee Moravka?
Here.
Trustee Sluse?
Here.
Trustee Sterba?
Here.
All right, and let's bring us the public comments. So if you have any comments about any of the items on the agenda or anything else, now's the time to do it. Once we get to the actual business items, you know, discussion is just among trustees. So if you've got something to say, please come up.
May I come up?
Yes, of course.
I'm Jody Becker. I live in town on Ranchy Road, and I would appreciate a vote no to the chickens within the village limits. I don't know where it would stop if we allowed chickens. Then would it progress to having pigs, horses? Who knows what else people would ask for? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Jolene. I am a local resident here in the village of Peatone. I would like to propose to allow backyard chickens. A couple of times I've been here before telling you the benefits. I've also in the reconsideration efforts to allow chickens. The prefab coop is something that I think might be able to consider as the village kind of lacks code enforcement at the current moment. Homeowners are still building sheds on their property. Coop structure kind of resembles the construction of a shed, but to eliminate the inconvenience of discussion and inspection of a self-constructed coop, consideration to allow prefabricated coops would be with the chicken consideration. Prefabricated coops are available locally at stores such as Farm &amp; Fleet, Tractor Supply, is not a permanent structure. Chicken shelters, these chicken shelters provide protection against predators and also keep the naughty chickens that like to fly the coop safe in their yard. The prefab coop option would eliminate the need for construction permit and have a clean look, and some can even match home decor. Backyard chicken owners often like to keep plants in gardens, which also help the local pollinators as well as enhancing the urban home center that's seeking self-sustainability. And I also have some picture options that I can leave for you to look at.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So, thanks for all the information you provided us. There's a coop, and then there's actually, you have to provide room for them to run around in, right?
Mm-hmm.
So that's not part of the coop? That's like an addition to the coop, is that right?
Well...
I don't know anything about chickens, so I'm looking for help.
Sure. Tractor Supply, Farm &amp; Fleet, they have coops, and then they have add-ons where you can open up the structure and allow them a run coop. Like, it's just, if you see in the photo here, it would be just a little fenced-in area that's enclosed, so they can't fly over, and they can run inside of there, so they have extra square footage for their exercise.
But we need both, right? You can't have a coop and keep them all inside all the time.
They need more room to exercise.
Yeah, you gotta do both.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Unless their wings are clipped and they're not leaving your yard.
Nobody wants to do that.
Okay. I just wanted to pass this.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure, thank you.
So, in some of the emails that were sent, those suggested that there could be a permit being, what do you think is reasonable for a permit fee? Fifty dollars?
I mean, I would pay fifty dollars to have chickens in my yard.
Okay. And would you be open to having, to allowing inspection of your yard beforehand to make sure that it satisfies?
Of course.
Okay.
And then, do they need heaters in the winter?
Um, you don't know. Only chicks. When they're, before they're of hatching, like when they can start laying. Usually, in our weather, I wouldn't put them outside until like at least eight weeks old. So anytime before that, you have a brooder, which could be in your house with the chicks in it with the heat lamps. If you are gonna put them outside, you are gonna want a heat lamp or some kind of heat in the structure, but you can keep them in a small indoor thing. Our friends have a bunch of chickens. But then after that, they are able to withstand the cold.
Oh, they are?
And they huddle with each other, and they, on their roost bars in their coop.
So it's conceivable you have a coop, but you don't need electricity for it?
Correct.
You do not need electricity, okay.
But if you do put electricity, it would have to be up to code.
Yes.
You can't put an extension cord.
That would be crazy.
And how long do the chickens live?
Ten to ten years.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, my god.
It's like a dog.
How long do they lay for?
That varies too. I mean, I've seen chickens that lay most of their life, because they usually start around eighteen weeks.
And they don't lay when they're molting.
Yeah, they molt too, so they'll have periods where they aren't laying, but...
They slow down during the winter also?
Some, they, some slow down, some keep producing. It depends on the breed of the chicken. And chickens are like any animal, they have their own personalities. So some follow their common rules of nature, some don't. So, it really varies.
All right, so if you have something you want to pass out, yeah, go ahead. Anybody else want to speak?
I was kind of already talking. I'm Catherine Mahon. I also live in town, and I am clearly in support of backyard chickens as well. We have young children, and I love the idea of them learning how to care for animals. We have a couple dogs. And I think chickens, it's easy to help out with the chickens. It's great responsibility. I think living in a town that's surrounded by agriculture, it would make sense. I understand we're not in the country, but chickens don't require acres and all that. It's not like we're trying to have a hundred chickens, just a few. And like, we were explaining with the run, you can have the coop, they're able, they're movable structures. They don't have to be cemented into the ground. And the run, you can honestly use like those dog playpens and just put a cover on it, and that could be their run, so they can't get out. But, I mean, there's so many benefits. It helps eliminate food waste. I know someone brought up worry about giving rotten food and having that scent or having that attract. You don't give them rotten food. You finish your dinner at the end of the night, you give them what's left over, if you'd like to, and the next day you go and pick out. If anything's starting to go bad, the chickens will tell you if they don't want it. They won't eat it then. Otherwise, they'll eat whatever you give them. So, that's kind of what I just wanted to add.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more question?
Yes.
So, you guys, I shouldn't say you guys. Somebody provided us with a whole bunch of current ordinances from different towns and stuff. And some of them were pretty liberal, but some of them, you know, were reasonably restricted. Being, if we did, went with some of those ordinances that currently exist and tailored them for us, I mean, is that good for you guys?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're willing to abide by and work with you guys, yeah.
I think we should have a six-foot fence. If you have chickens, I think you should have a fence, so your neighbors don't have to see it.
I agree.
I mean, we're willing to work with you guys, but...
Yeah. But you agree there's some discussion these ways?
Definitely, yeah. I mean, I get why people don't want chickens in town. But there's also, there's good and bad, both ways. You can't make everybody happy, I understand that. But I think a six-foot fence...
Yeah, having it contained.
...would settle a lot of problems. And that will deter the people that can't put, you know what I mean? If they can't put a fence up, they're not going to get chickens.
You're gonna have to really want chickens to do some of these things.
And if you don't want to look at them, you won't have to see them. That's kind of...
Yeah, some of them have screenings and stuff required, so, okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
Sure.
Last? Are you just taking your coat off, or you're coming to speak?
Getting warmed up.
Ed Nelson, I live over on the Hague by the high school. Starting out, maybe a no vote on the chickens. Just, I moved to Peatone from Park Forest. I could've moved in the country, I could've moved out. Not be a townie, but I moved to Peatone. Be a townie, live in town. I would like to see, we've got a full crowd tonight. Was anybody at the meet and greet that came on a week ago or so? Two? Three? So one thing I did hear from some of the trustees running and in the paper is we don't have transparency in here at the village board. And once I talked to there, they said, "We need transparency." I said, "Well, I never see you at the meetings. How do you get transparency?" They didn't have an idea. They didn't, they didn't know. They could read the VODA. You get under your rights pretty good on what happens at the meetings, so... I'm glad you guys are all here, that you're coming tonight. Six o'clock must be all right. Maybe people will show up for other things. I think that's it right now.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Erica Bowski, I live on Ranchy. I'm here about the zoning. I understand they're gonna pass it and they sent it here, but I don't understand what the vision of the village is. And I do believe that it's supposed to be posted so other people know. The zoning commission was on the night, what was that last Monday? For the meet and greet. So, and now here, it's tonight, as an approval. Does it need to be posted, or...?
No, I mean, it was posted, you know, all the, it was posted for the planning and zoning meeting. Our agenda's posted tonight. You know, the meet and greet, you know, that was an independent business that decided to have that. The planning commission meetings are always on the same night, so I mean, there was no... You know, that's just what it is. But, so, all the postings and putting it in the paper and all that was all done.
And now we're gonna send it for approval tonight?
It's on the agenda.
Because this is like the first step to making that all so commercial. Is that the vision that we want in Peatone? Is to have commercial exit?
Well, most towns have commercial businesses around intersections of interstate, so...
Most towns do. Almost every town. We're like the next town down, and then the next town down, and then the next town down. I just don't understand the vision. How about the airport? Any, any news airport?
You know, there's a bill that had been passed by the House. I'm not sure if it passed the Senate yet, but it sounds like it's going to pass the Senate. And I don't know if the governor's gonna sign it or not. I don't think he would. I've heard that he's not going to, but that doesn't mean he won't. And all it does is, it just requires IDOT to put out a call for qualifications for, you know, people who, somebody who wants to build the airport, so that's where it's at right now.
Okay. And with that new truck stop coming, the streets in the village, are we gonna have any signage? Or has there any determination of where trucks will go or are allowed to go?
Well, trucks cannot, you know, go on the village streets, and, you know, the police weren't gonna enforce that. I mean, they're supposed to stick to the main routes unless they're delivering something. So, you know, if they're not on Route 50 or Wilmington Road, you know, they're not where they should be, and the police department will take care of it.
Right, but coming in off Joliet Road, or to come right into town?
That is a problem. There is a, there is a posting as far as how much the weight that's allowed there. And we do have issues with that, and that's something that the police department's looking into enforcing for sure.
Okay, so that'll all be done before the truck stops finished?
Well, it's a work in progress.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, guys.
Hello.
Hello. So I'm Virginia Hammond. A lot of you guys know me. I'm your Peatone Township assessor. I'm trying to fix what was left to me. And with that being said, it's been over six weeks ago I contacted Mrs. Engels about needing to know, I needed some answers. I'm trying to assess some problems, and I had people come to me, and I can't get the answers, so I figured I would come here and ask. So I needed, I asked for a copy of an ordinance to find, see if you guys have an ordinance on the books requiring consolidation if you own adjoining lots. Do you guys have an ordinance in the books that they have to consolidate before they break ground? And if so, I asked for a copy of it. I've gotten no answer. And I also asked...
We don't have that.
I also asked if there's an ordinance for setbacks for lot lines, which I know there is. And I have not received that either. And the reason being, I thought I had three parcels. The one parcel was made right. Alan Gillis, on your zoning committee, owns, he used to own two lots there at 600 North Street. In 2019, he did, I did find the paperwork. It was in a different file. There's many things that are not where they belong. But we did find the paperwork, and I was able to confirm it with the county that he did consolidate his two lots, because he built the shed on the vacant lot, and I know that that was a question. So that one is fine. However, when we were going through the permits that had been neglected, I found permits for Julie Sluse's place at 406 Ranchy. There was an addition done in 2017. When I go to assess it and I pull it up on my Eagle View, she also owns the, what's supposed to be a vacant lot to the north of it. However, the lot line from the south lot and the south line of the north lot runs right through the garage. There's over a hundred square feet that crosses the property line. Well, that poses a problem for me to try to assess something. And I also have her vacant, what's supposed to be her vacant lot, has an entire pool and deck on. When I called and asked, I was told a vacant lot meant the improvement's supposed to be done on the lot where the home is. However, the, why weren't these two lots consolidated? And when I pull it up on my Eagle View, her south, where her addition was in 2017, is when the garage and the addition to the house were built. And the south property, the south edge of her house is very close to that lot line. So that's why I asked for these ordinances. It's been over six weeks. I am trying to straighten that mess, and I can't get answers. So that's why I came here. Then I also have another one that's being built right now. And Edmund owns three lots on Ranchy. The house is being built on the south two lots, but it's not consolidated. Consolidation takes almost, it takes almost two years from the time you apply till I get a new PIN number, so that poses a problem for trying to assess what's being built. So I'm trying to find out, do you guys have some kind of ordinance that you need to consolidate before you would build across a lot line? And if you don't, why? Because it makes a nightmare for me. So, and it doesn't, it doesn't pose well that we should lead by example. And so when I ask for questions, it's for a reason. I call, I leave messages, I have to call back multiple times. I've talked to Stacy many times, and she's like, "I have to refer you, you know, for, to the building," and that was, is Amy. And I'm having a hard time getting calls back on this. I'm trying to keep up with what I, I've got like twenty-four years of mess to fix. But it is what it is. It'll, I'll get fixed in time, but I'm, and I have to commend Stacy. She ran across the problem, looking for something for Amy, actually, and she called me, she says, "Virginia, I think we have a problem." And I said, "Why?" She says, "I've got the files, and I'm finding two copies of these permits." I'm like, "That's not good." Because that means, in Pat's defense, that means Pat never, she never got the permit. So how was she supposed to, you know, put that improvement on a parcel if whoever's in building never got the permits to the assessor? So Stacy was kind enough to pull a spreadsheet for me, and we backed all the way up to 2017 and tried to get a lot of these improvements that are missing. So I just need some answers about how I'm supposed to proceed with, you know, a property line going through a building. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Could I come up again?
Sure. For you and...
So we don't, we have a code enforcer, but I understand he's only here one, maybe two days a week.
Right.
Even before you consider chickens, or, we need a code enforcer to enforce the codes if you make codes. There's so many codes right now that people just pick it up on themselves and break the code, and then hopefully they don't get caught. In this town, it's ridiculous. Instead of following the codes, and we have nobody to enforce them. There's pretty plain ones out there I see every day, and they've been there for, I'm gonna say, five years, and still nothing. So, we need a code enforcer.
Yeah, that's why we want to, we want to hire one.
More money maybe to offer?
Yeah.
Possibly. I read the qualifications in there. They're, they seem pretty, you gotta have some good qualifications to fill the position. With that, I don't think you need money. Good luck.
Thanks, Ed.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
May I?
Sure.
Okay, have you been to the villages of Elwood? You can go to that village, you don't even know there's the train, trucks. You don't know. It's all outlining, tells them where to go. It's never interfering. You don't even hear them. And the environmental study, they said there was one done because of the truck stop?
Um, I'm not...
The planning and zoning commission said, you know, because of the pond over there too, they said, "Oh, they did an environmental study."
I'm not quite sure if that's true. Try to, do you know anything about that?
I think they did a site assessment just for the, like, the underground excavation dirt. I don't know about a whole environmental study.
Because, you know, where's the benefit for the residents here with all this? But where was the posting too, for the paper? For the zoning?
Who's in the VODA?
I'm sorry.
Who's in the VODA?
All right, was there like a diagram of, because it, posting of our future goals? The planning and zoning for the year?
No, I mean, the posting is just an announcement of the meeting and what's being discussed at the meeting.
But there's no maps?
No.
Isn't it required that there be maps sent out to let people know?
No.
All right, that's it. But Elwood, very nice.
Okay.
On our website, there's a lot of planning materials. If you want to review them, there's the comprehensive plan, there's the zoning map, there's the business district, there's the business district plan, there's the TIP plans. So a lot of that drives development, and it's basically the policy for development and future growth. So it just might be something you want to review. Sounds like you'd be interested in it. All right, thank you.
All right, moving on, the consent agenda. We are gonna move the home occupation permit down to new business. We have on the consent agenda approving the minutes of the March 13th, 2023, regular village board meeting, payroll accounts payable for the pay period ending 3/24. The payroll's $80,007, $18,24. The account's payable for the pay period ending 3/24/23 for, from the general fund, $43,078,150, and the building permit fund, $1,825, for a total of $45,606,50. Also on the consent agenda is accepting resignation of Nathan Hess, police officer, accepting resignation of Kenneth Hopman, the police officer, and resignation of Public Works Labor David Baker. Are there any of those items that trustees want to take off the consent agenda? If not, I'm taking a motion to approve.
Motion second.
Moved by trustee Moravka, seconded by trustee Sluse.
Trustee Bowden?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Moravka? Yes. Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Sterba?
Yes.
All right, moving on to staff and committee reports. Angie?
I don't have anything new to report. I just want to see if you've got any questions. I, again, it's the last meeting, I was taking my son out of college, so... Wanted to be here, see if there's any questions or anything, guys.
Is the, around the water tower, is that gonna be a restoration?
Yeah.
That's on the agenda, okay.
Yeah. Yes, that'll be happening. We, we've still been experiencing some main breaks like this. The weather's been a little bit weird, so since, when it fluctuates like that, so there's, there's been a few main breaks. We started to look into some of our restoration, so that will be getting done as soon as possible.
Okay.
I had a friend ask me, she had been to one of the meetings for the Park District. She was just asking about a water treatment plant or something, or not a plant, but like a...
Oh, it's a chemical feed building.
Okay.
Chemical feed building, yeah. Yeah, so we, by order of IPA, we have to put in a chemical feed building. So right now, we're in the works of trying to determine like the best location and where we can put it. There's limited spots, it has to be on a main that feeds, you know, the entire town. So that's one of the locations that would be suitable. So we did have a meeting with the Park District to talk through that. We attended one, one meeting.
Are they really big, or are they...?
If, my memory serves right, it's twelve by eight.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they don't smell or anything?
No, 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 no. They don't smell, and they're locked. The picture we have, it's a light gray, whitish building, but no, not very big. So a lot different than the trailer that was there.
Okay.
So, yeah, yeah.
She was asking me, I'm like, "I have no idea."
Sure, yeah. Anything else? All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Neve.
All right, Public Works, Bob?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Just a few things on the horizon here. Brush pickup starts next week, first Monday, April. We ask you to follow the guidelines we put into place. You can find those on the website, and I believe they were posted on Facebook. This week, I'm gonna be doing some interviews for my department. I'm still reviewing apps coming in, a lot more than previous years. Well, that's great news. Department is planting trees this week. You'll see us out and about. I want to thank Peatone Township for the use of their skid steer. It's good that, you know, we've got other entity that we get along with. Well, there's a touch truck event this Thursday night at Lincoln Way West from five to seven. I'll be there with one of our vehicles. You want to come out and check that out?
It's a weather spotter effect, right?
Yeah, there's a few different activities going on, but sponsored by, I believe, the Village of New Lakes, so...
Where's that at, Bob? Sorry.
Joliet West. I believe that's on Gilbert Road.
Lincoln?
Lincoln Way West. Or, what did I say?
Lincoln Way, yeah. I was like, "Lincoln..."
Did I say Joliet West? I'm sorry. Lincoln Way West.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Wow, that's weird. My nephew goes in, that's why. The PTO reached out to me today from, you know, the schools. They want me to participate in our annual family night. And I said, "Absolutely, you know, no problem, whatever you need." So they're gonna have a touch truck event also. But more details, I didn't get all the details, we're still working out the date, but absolutely. So if I didn't say yes, my wife would probably make me say yes. So...
That's great.
So, that's all I got, so...
Exactly what is a touch truck event, Bob?
You bring out a truck, dump truck, sweeper, backhoe, it gives the kids, they can climb in it, kinda check it out. You know, it's a lot better than Tonka's, you know what I mean? So, something like that, so. Yeah.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Troy, what do you guys?
For the MFT project this year, we're gonna get started on the design work. So I think GeoCount's gonna be out there this Thursday, weather permitting, to take pavement course in the Mill Trace neighborhood. And then we'll be picking up quantities for the streets and getting bid docs prepared and submitted IDA for review.
What's the progress on the railroad street? They just have to get the landscaping done and the parking blocks?
Landscaping, parking blocks, and the crosswalks, the stamped asphalt crosswalks, which it needs to be warmer for those.
Okay. And I did tell Troy to come up with a fix for the entry to that back part of that lot to make it easy for larger vehicles to get in there. So that's gonna be done when whoever gets the contract for, you know, Mill Trace, have that done at the same time. Police report.
I'll talk about the things on the agenda a little bit when you get to that, but just briefly, as you see, we lost two officers. That's, we have 10, so that's 20% of the police department. So the officers have been great, I have moved them, detectives doing detective and street, the SRO's doing SRO and street. Day shift people are night shift, night shift people are in day shift. I'm working days and nights, but all the officers, it hasn't been a problem. I said, hey, you're gonna work like six shifts in the next two weeks, and they're like, okay, you know, whatever we need till we, till we get the staffing fixed. So I just wanna let trustees know that the officers have been great with the bouncing around.
Great.
Oh, and we do have a couple officers, since you brought it, we do have a couple officers scheduled for truck enforcement schools, so we'll have some other officers going to the truck school as well.
Perfect.
Sweet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, admin's report.
We are looking for a full-time building zoning coordinator. So it may encompass actual property maintenance code enforcement, but we're checking resumes and we'll work on training if we get the right person. The position's unfilled, it's open until it's filled, and we'll be doing interviews next week on some resumes we already got. Rebel Ice Cream is moving along with their renovations on Main Street, and I'll have a registration for you guys next month for them. The taxing body, taxing bodies all met at the end of February. They meet quarterly where, you know, get together, share updates, look for ways to collaborate. The next blood drive is May 23rd from 11:00 to 6:00 at the fire district on Juliette Road. So you can register for your donation there. The clerk mailed out business registrations, liquor licenses, tobacco, video gaming, and coin operated amusement applications. So if you haven't gotten one or if you have any questions, get ahold of Stacy.
Do you wanna update everybody on 206 or second demo?
Basically, we're, we reached out to a local contractor after the original bid was accepted and they decided they didn't wanna do it because the scope of work was, they didn't wanna adhere to the scope of work that we put out. The local contractor that we talked to went out and looked at the site and decided he didn't wanna do the job, so we'll rebid it.
Okay. All right, I don't think I missed anybody. My comments, the administrator and I are attending the Will County Government Lobby Day in Springfield tomorrow. We'll be meeting with local legislators as well as some of the leadership team. We've been working with our, our financial consultant and trustee Bowden of the ALC on maximizing interest on the village's accounts. We're moving some money that has been getting minimal interest into some shorter term CDs that are, you know, now gaining around 5% interest, so it should be a nice increase into the budget. The construction at I-57 and 88th Avenue is set to begin in mid-April. We had a pre-construction meeting with Robinson Engineering and Public Works and the contractor last week. And 88th Avenue will be mostly closed except for local traffic, you know, for pretty much the whole summer. Wilmington Road will stay open, there will be some lane adjustments as we go through the project. The ramps on I-57 will mostly stay open, there may be some nighttime closures and those will be, you know, posted well beforehand. But it's, so just take it slow around there until that project gets done. I think when it's done, it's gonna be a nice improvement for safety, the sightlines I think are gonna be better than they are now. You know, we all wish IDA would rebuild that whole bridge or intersection, but I think what we're doing is gonna be a big improvement. Let's see, community garage sales, Stacy has been gracious enough to kinda take on this project. It was usually done by the chamber, but they decided they didn't wanna do it. So the village has kinda taken the lead on this, it'll be June 16th and 17th. And watch out for more information, I'm sure we'll be posting on Facebook about coming in and signing up. And we are gonna put together a map like's been done in the, in the past. So that's the weekend of the 16th and 17th of June. Okay, that's all the comments I have. If you're wondering any old business, new business, we'll talk about the home occupation permit by Diva Mibella LLC here in makeup artistry by Danielle Leighton, 1021 Bonnie Lane. Is Danielle here?
I am.
Come on up.
Sure.
So tell us kinda what, what type of business are you doing there?
So Diva Mibella is a traveling booking agency for hair and makeup. I'm predominant in the wedding industry, 80% wedding and about 20% commercial. So the Piattone location, because we do have several other salons, the Piattone location is my home base that I just reconstructed. And it'll only be used basically for bridal trials.
So just for bridal parties to come in and, or what?
Nope, it's literally for trials, just for the bride to have a makeup trial or a hair trial. It's only for one or two people tops, so just for the bride specifically.
So how often do you anticipate that that would happen?
Out of all the other salons that we do operate out of, this location will mostly be for my southern clients. And I can honestly say I do about 15% sales past Piattone, we're talking like Kankakee on. So it would probably be like once a month, twice a month, it's not used heavily.
And so it would just be the bride coming in and getting her?
Correct, yeah. Don't get me wrong, if, because I, so the wedding industry is predominant Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Trials are typically on Sundays or Monday through Thursday, and that can be anything working within their working hours, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Your application said there was no customer parking needed, so that's, well, if a bride's coming to your house?
I have a driveway.
Okay, okay, so that's your plan, is they'll just pull into your driveway?
Exactly, because if it's raining or anything like that, I don't want the brides to get messed up walking, so, yeah, close as possible into, in my driveway.
Okay.
Other questions? So you have like a room set up in your house to do this, is that?
Yes, sir. So the first thing that I needed to do was get my business license through the village and then eventually go through the IDFPR, the Illinois Department of Federal and Professional Regulation. In order to do that, I had to build a sink, it has to have its own room, away from any eating spaces or anything like that, and its own bathroom. So it's all up to code that way, the first step was though, to go through you guys.
Do you look to expand that business into other venues?
Oh, yeah, so I have 30 girls that work for me, and like I said, we spotlight from several different salons. I have a salon that we spotlight from in Naperville, Timmy Park, Chicago, Velpo.
Do you mean expanding the services in your home?
No, I'm predominant in just the wedding industry, that's my, my main business, so hair and makeup. And it's not hair, like, we're thinking cut, color, anything along those lines, it's updos and makeup because that's what's, I mean, you get five, six girls in your mess, my money maker right there.
The home-based occupations code does not allow for outside advertising in a residential district. So there wouldn't be any signs in the yard or anything like that.
Yeah, and Amy did make me aware, and she also sent me the ordinance, and I completely understand, as long as there's no signage, and we should be golden.
Okay.
I move to accept.
Second.
Moved by trustee Moravka, seconded by trustee Sluse to approve the home occupation permit for Diva Mibella LLC.
Trustee Bowden?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Sterba?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, discuss village code 9109, the discussion item. This is the, our village code for keeping livestock, which currently, you know, prohibits all livestock. So obviously, we've had some people in favor of keeping chickens, we have some people that are against it. What's your pleasure, Board?
There definitely are people that are in favor and people that are against, trying to keep an open mind on this. We did get information that Amanda gave us, a bunch of different ordinances and stuff like that. I mean, if we are to take a look at that, is that something that we go to a committee, or how would we?
I mean, I just thought, it's such a, you know, polarizing issue, I just thought the whole board should discuss it. And, you know, if we decide that we wanna move forward to writing ordinance, then yeah, we'd probably go to a committee to, to do that. But first, before we did that, I just thought, you know, do we, I don't wanna put a committee that they put in a lot of work in and then it comes to the board and, you know, gets voted on, so, I mean, if you guys...
I mean, I called a few of the places from her list that was sent to us, and it said most of the problems that they had code-wise was either one, people weren't coming in to get permits for the animals they had, they would just, whatever. And the other one was just the chickens getting out. They didn't have like a whole lot of problems with like the smell or anything, so I was kinda like, okay, well, that was a plus on that side. But the chickens getting out, they said, you know, or other people's animals getting in there and getting them, that was an issue with some ways. So I kind of, in my opinion, if we had a full-time code enforcer, I think this would be a lot easier to do that way just because we'd have somebody out there looking and just kind of being able to take control of that situation if we decided yes.
Okay. If you decided to do this, do you discriminate against ducks and turkeys?
Yeah, well, definitely.
Where do you draw the line in the sand?
Right.
So I was gonna say, I, I've learned a lot, things I never thought I would need to learn. I mean, I like the prefab houses, this was super helpful. Now I understand the difference between a coop and a run. But yeah, I think it should go to the building committee and they should vet this out. And the pro-chicken people and the anti-chicken people can all come and kinda talk about where's their common ground that, you know, we can, we can do this. I mean, I have friends that have chickens that think that, you know, this should've been done a long time ago. But I've also had a lot of people come up to me and say, you're not really considering that, are you? And, you know, so I just think that everybody should just get together and kinda sort this thing out. And it's not gonna happen in one meeting, I think it's gotta kinda, I'm not saying we stretch it out over six months, but I think it, it just needs some careful consideration, because yeah, you gotta set the rules and then you gotta enforce them.
Right.
And, you know, we already admit that we have a problem with, with code here, so that's why I think we kinda just, it's not no, it's just not yet. But at least start talking about it, so that's...
I agree with going, having it go to a committee, discussing further.
You know, to your point about the, you know, that most of the issues are chickens getting out or pets getting in and eating the chickens. I mean, my big thing is, yeah, I would like to, first of all, we need a fence, you know, it'd be a six, you know, a six-foot fence, privacy fence around the whole yard, you know. And then, you know, we gotta decide about the coop, if we want, you know, these prefab things or, you know, some ordinances require a building permit for these, which, you know, I don't think is a bad idea.
Definitely register them.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, you know, an annual permit, just like you'd get for your dog, I mean, you know, something like that, I think is a good idea. The one thing we gotta keep in mind though is, you know, once somebody gets a permit, even if we have a code enforcement officer, you know, they can't go in somebody's backyard without their permission, so, you know, if a neighbor complains...
Is it something you could put in an ordinance?
How do you monitor that?
I, I don't know, well, I mean, it's like anything else, I mean...
But can't you put a provision that says annual inspections?
You could.
Yeah, inspection, yes.
Annual inspections will renew your license.
Sure.
Yeah, so, I mean, something like that, I mean, on one hand, I don't wanna like over-regulate it 'cause we don't, we don't have the capacity to enforce it, and I don't wanna make it, I don't wanna make the code difficult to interpret. So, you know, on one hand, I just wanna say just put a six-foot fence and, you know, whatever you do in there, it's your business. But then you gotta think of the neighbors, you know, and, so, I don't know, I guess we need to hash it out a little more, but...
Sometimes it's gone to $75 the initial fee, $50 a day annually.
Yeah.
Maximum of six chickens.
But then you have to have somebody looking at that too, like, you have to have somebody enforcing that. Like if they don't come in, 'cause in Bradley, she said, we have, they have eight people that are registered for the chickens, eight families. And she goes, and I know there's at least 80, and there's nothing they can do about it, so it was like, I said, okay.
Can I ask, as an elected official, I wanna ask you a question because it will pertain to this. Can I see the picture? Is this a permanent structure?
No.
It doesn't look like it, it looks like something you just move around.
Well, because if it's a coop that is built on a concrete pad, then it's not an accessible?
Yes, it's an accessory building.
Right, just so.
And that's one of the things that we have to decide, is are we gonna allow a second accessory building? And if, if they get an accessory building and the neighbor wants, I want two sheds, and we say, well, no, we can't. I mean, that's something we gotta talk about too.
So they'll...
So you have an ordinance that they can only have one?
Yes.
I, I would like a copy of that.
So they'll add it into another code.
But you wouldn't put it on a concrete pad, you wouldn't put a chicken coop on a concrete pad?
You wouldn't make permanent at all.
All right, let's keep the discussion to the board. So let's, okay, well, building committee, you guys can have at it, and we'll have a meeting in the next couple weeks, you guys can...
Tell me the dates. Anti-chicken people need to be there, 'cause the pro-chicken people are definitely gonna be there.
So it will be posted and I'm sure it'll be, you know, on Facebook, so we'll keep moving forward, okay? All right, item H, ordinance approving class M2 liquor license for Suzie's Saloons located 11, 111 North, Second Street. This would be ordinance 2306, the M2 liquor license, you wanna tell us what that is?
Sure, it is a, there's two class Ms, a class M1 and a class M2. The M2 liquor license shall allow for entertainment performances at such time as dates and times may be approved by the liquor commissioner, in a nutshell.
So is, this is a...
This is in addition to their regular... This is in addition to their regular liquor license, this is kind of a.
So if they have somebody performing, they have to let us know, it's not just a blanket.
Right, it is for the full year, though, so that they can give us a list of their events that will be involved in entertainment performances, you know, we can, we can look at, the liquor commissioner can approve those as given for the year.
Okay, and what's the, is there time restrictions? And it's all indoor, right? This is not, we're not approving, uh, the outdoor.
No, class O is for outdoor.
Yeah.
I don't readily see the, any.
It's probably just the time.
Any different times than their regular class.
Okay.
Outdoor licenses have a shorter, they have to close earlier than their, than they do indoors.
What is their class license now?
But I mean, is it going to change that?
No, no, it doesn't change that.
So every year, they're going to have to have that one, and then this one will have to be extra. Correct. I think they're an A, but I'm not sure. But this would be addition, and they'd have to get this one every year? Yes. Okay. Because also not everybody with a regular liquor license has an M or an O, just certain establishments, if they want to operate that way.
Motion, second.
Moved by trustee Sluse, seconded by trustee Moravka.
Trustee Bowden?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Sturba?
Yes.
All right, moving on, item I, resolution to approve service agreement with standard and associates for recruitment of police officers not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars, this would be resolution twenty-three dash R, dash oh five. Chief, you want to give us?
So, uh, since Peatone is under five thousand residents, we're not required, we don't have a police and fire commission, and we can, there's pretty much no rules on how we hire, hire police officers, within reason, of course. But what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to actually establish an eligibility list, get applicants out there. And this, this particular company allows people to take a written exam online, they pay a fee, it's forty, forty-five dollar fee that they paid to take the test. That forty-five dollars comes off that fifteen hundred dollars that the, that it costs, so if we, you know, if we have ten people, that's four hundred and fifty dollars, so it would be a thousand fifty, so that's why it's to a maximum of fifteen hundred. If we have absolutely nobody, take, take the application, we're still on the hook for, for fifteen hundred dollars, or if we have one person, take it, then we're on the hook for fourteen hundred and sixty-five dollars, six, fifty-five dollars, fifty-five dollars. So that's, that's, that's why it's, it's a maximum of fifteen hundred, but then it, then it subtracts. So then, I'm going to change a few of the other processes, we're going to have some interviews, and we're actually going to establish an eligibility list, because I have places, uh, I have spots reserved, uh, I'm on standby for August, and I have spots reserved for the January police academies to try to get officers that are new, uh, trained. So if anybody here wants to be a police officer, or has a kid that wants to be a police officer, see me and I'll talk to them, so, all right?
Questions from the board? Chief, how long is the contract? How long is it?
It's, it's just a one-test deal.
Oh, so it's.
So as soon as I take the test, it's over.
Okay.
Make motion to approve.
Okay, moved by trustee Hudson, seconded by trustee Jones.
Trustee Bowden?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Sturba?
Yes.
All right, item J, motion to approve side letter of understanding agreement between the Village of Peatone's Police Department and the International Brotherhood of Peepsters, seven hundred local representing the Peatone police officers. Well, chief, come on up again and explain what you're doing here.
So, uh, everybody has a copy of, of the, the letter that was drafted. We've already done a straw poll with, with all the union members, they, they agreed to it, they're having their official meeting next week. Uh, if you guys approve it, then they, then they will vote on it. As you see, I'm trying to change the, uh, on the back page of that agreement, I'm trying to change the, the structure of the pay a little bit, to encourage lateral employee, employees from other towns. Uh, if you look at the salary comparison sheet, the blue and green one, that is, within the last month, all towns that have, have been hiring as well, and the, the blue is their starting salary, and the green is their top-out salary, and then I also put, uh, the population on the bottom, so you can kind of see where they are in comparison with Peatone. And then if you look at the red and yellow one, if you agree and change the starting pay, uh, for, uh, lateral specifically, it would be red, and then the, the, the top page is, is on there as well.
So we're kind of, you know, stuck, uh, our current, uh, starting salary, or, are these let, yeah, starting salary is, is quite a bit lower than all the adjacent towns, and so, um, we're having trouble with recruitment and also trouble with retention, because officers can move to another department and, you know, make more money, basically.
So, yeah, if you look, if you look at the first one, our, just so I have it out here, so the Peatone, we started at fifty-two, nine, fifty-six, and Beecher's now starting out at seventy-seven, three oh eight, because they're kind of the closest town to us in comparison, so it, I mean, I try to do everything I can for the officers to make it a great place, and the community's great here, and the board is great, but still, some people just, just are going to go, go where they can make more money for their family. So I'm just trying to, trying to make it a little more level playing field for us here at Peatone.
I have a question.
Yes.
If somebody would want to be a police officer here that had ten years' experience, do those years of experience affect their wage rate? Even though they were here, if they were somewhere else?
Currently, no. So if, if you, say, say somebody from Beecher has ten years on Beecher and wants to come here and start, they're going from, they would go from like eighty thousand and start back here at our starting pay, which is fifty-two thousand.
So basically, the people that we're going to recruit are going to be newbies.
Right.
They go like the teachers, if somebody moves from one area to another, and they've got fifteen years of experience, they move in on a pay scale with their experience.
Right.
And consequently, you draw maybe a higher-grade personnel for the job.
Yeah, and that's, and that's, that's the intent of, of the side letter agreement, so that we can, when people have more experience, that we can bring them in at, at a, at a little higher rate than what the, than what they would be as a, as a starting person.
So currently, we don't, but the side letter will give, some of, they'll be able to use some of that, their.
Yeah, so instead of the one-year rate, which is fifty-two, they would, they could, they could go up to the, the three-year rate, which is fifty-nine, five, seventy-six, almost sixty thousand.
Is that enough for somebody with a veteran person that you might want? It's better than what, what we're doing now.
Depends on where they're coming from, really.
I mean, if, if the board could, could give me a hundred and fifty thousand to start with, I bet you I can get a lot of police officers. But, you know, that's kind of a loaded question, trustee, you know, but yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm hoping that I, that I can, I can pull some people with, with that rate, yes.
So, I mean, I think this is a good start, I mean, we'll see what happens. You know, if we have to, we'll make adjustments, but, you know, let's, we got to try something, because.
So the, there's one year left on the current contract, and when, when, you know, I talked to Amy and the mayor, we don't want to open up the contract up, that's why we just do a side letter, just, and we're not talking about the officers that have been here fifteen or twenty years, this is just for the new ones, because the two that, the two that just left have not been here very long, and they both left the places where they make more money. And I'm trying to keep the, the possibly three, three other people that are fairly young, I'm trying to, to keep them here, because they're doing a great job, so.
So it puts us on par with Wilmington and Crete, Mantino and Bradley, and so it puts us.
Yes, sir.
In a much better position.
Yep.
That's what I'm hoping for.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Bowden, seconded by trustee Moravka to, and this is, oh, there's no, this is the motion to approve the side letter of understanding.
Trustee Bowden?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Sturba?
Yes.
All right, moving on, item K, motion to approve IDAP resolutions for twenty-twenty-three resurfacing project in Mill Trace neighborhood on Sprinker, Amsterdam and Van Gogh, and engineering agreement. Troy, do you have any thoughts?
These are just required IDAP forms and resolutions to use MFT money and to also use the rebuilt Illinois Bond Fund money, which was extra money that all towns received and is eligible to use for this type of work. So the one resolution is for the rebuilt Illinois Bond Fund money that's remaining, and the other resolutions for supplemental MFT funding. So we always, um, overestimate the MFT resolution, just in case, you know, just so you don't have to come back for a supplemental in case the project, you know, comes in higher for some reason, but it should not cost that much. And then there's also the engineering agreement, which they require to use MFT funds for engineering.
So, Bob, you want to tell us how you determined what streets need to be done?
Sure. Well, kind of heard, I, it's mainly by condition and age. As you all know, we have a lot of old streets in this town. And a lot that need to be fixed, so, um, that area, Bill Trace, uh, obviously before my time. I don't even know if they ever put the surface lift on that subdivision, um, if you drive through, you'll, the pavement's down this far from the curb, so, um, so we'd say unknown, I don't know, it's, obviously, before my time, um. The cores are going to tell us a lot about the base, the thickness of the asphalt, uh, so we'll see, but that's mainly how I judge repairs, is by the conditions.
I mean, we also had a, a street survey done by CMAT.
CMAT, yeah.
A couple of years ago, and.
Yeah.
So that kind of gives us a grade, and this is one of, you know, especially Amsterdam is in pretty bad shape. Troy, my question, so, besides what he said, like, the curb is elevated from the street, but then the sidewalks have sunk below the curb.
Base.
So, so how are you going to, how are you going to correct that, I mean, are we talking about?
The sidewalk or the curb?
Well, both, I mean, like, the sidewalks down here and the curbs up here, there's a lift there.
Yeah.
Are we doing something about that, or no?
Yeah, well, any curb ramps, we'll have to make ADA compliant, so.
Yeah.
It just might, we might have to take out more curb, take out more sidewalk, that's part of the, you know, MFT project, you, you remove concrete where needed to make ADA compliant, make the water drain along the curbs.
Yeah, when you do the cores, would you be able to tell if, uh, surface layer was ever put on there?
We should be able to, because there's different stone sizes, so we should be able to tell if only one layer or two layers were put on, and if it was a surface or not.
I can't remember.
Can we go back to the developer and ask him?
I don't think so.
He's not around.
Well, his, uh, his. Errors are, you know.
They moved to Florida. Well, a lot of, a lot of the drains and stuff are in pretty bad shape.
Yeah.
Sunk in pretty bad, and water puddles, and, yeah.
Well, they're not sunk, though, Gary, it's the pavement, so there's a misconception, everybody thinks that sewers are sinking, they're not sinking. What it is, is the structure's here, the pavement is sinking, so it gives you a vision of like, ooh, no, it's not the case.
All I know is there's a big puddle of water.
Correct.
And it's not going anywhere.
Sewer's not sinking, though.
All right. Any other questions?
I have a question, if we got to tear down curbs and tear out that sidewalk, would we be better off to leave the curb and tear out the sidewalk and move it back like everywhere else in town?
I don't think we can in that section, though, Mike.
There's no, there's no separate, we don't know, there's no parkway there.
No.
Yeah, that was set up that way from the beginning to have the sidewalks.
No extra spaces for trees.
No. Yeah. That was a bad decision made.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, we won't do that again. All right, um, so I need a motion.
Motion, second.
Moved by trustee Sluse, seconded by trustee Moravka to approve IDAP resolutions for the twenty-twenty-three resurfacing project.
Trustee Bowden?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Sturba?
Yes.
All right, next, item L, ordinance approving request for rezoning from R one, one-family residence to B three auto-oriented and service business district for eighty-six fifty West Wilmington Road. And this would be, uh, ordinance twenty-three dash oh seven, so, um, I think I saw, oh, there you are. And you are?
I'm Neil Pigash with Pigash Engineering, representing the developer, Chalkstone Partners.
So you don't have, so there's nothing definite, you know, this was just kind of a concept plan, you guys are just looking to change the zoning right now?
Yeah, this is really, this was kind of our first stab at it, the developer kind of wanted to see what we could fit on here, but by no means are any of these things set in stone, uh, there's no, obviously, really can't even negotiate with potential tenants until we have the zoning and entitlement things, uh, addressed, so that's, you know, the first step, this was just kind of the, the concept plan that the developers had me put together, and Amy thought it'd be good for us to kind of show something on this property with the rezoning request, so.
Where's Chalkstone Partners located?
They are Prosper, Texas.
Okay, so they're at local.
No.
And when did they buy this property?
It was last summer, I believe, so.
Owned it less than a year?
Yeah.
So they have no commitments currently from any developer to do anything here?
No, I mean, I think they were kind of waiting for the rezoning done first before they started, I mean, they've been talking to develop, to potential tenants, but, uh, nothing can really get finalized until the zoning allows us, so.
Yeah, so they're already marketing it, though, for a hotel, restaurant, a rare opportunity to develop I fifty-seven access with, uh, it's nineteen Acre Lake, adjacent to, like, so I don't understand why you need the zoning now, if they're already marketing it for this proposal.
I mean, this is part of the, the process, I, I, I guess I'm not sure, when you say they're marketing it, what do you mean?
Right there, it's eighty-six fifty West Wilmington Road property.
I, I guess I don't know where they're marketing it at, though, I've not seen that, so.
Yeah.
I'm doing what they've asked me to do.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
To request a rezoning for this, this complies with the, the village's comprehensive plan.
But you're not with the, you're not with the company that owns it, and you're not with.
No, no.
The developer who may potentially invest in it.
No.
Okay. So I'm against this. We haven't even opened up the travel center yet, that property has been sitting there for, forever. I don't think we need to be in a big rush to rezone it now, sight unseen, for what somebody may do, because the potential downfall going forward is, they may put in something that we hate that conforms, and then we'll be stuck with it. This company, if they're a true developer, they can market this property, work with the developer, create a, a good opportunity that's beneficial for them and for the village, and then come to us with these plans and a developer, and, you know, say, hey, will you rezone this, this deals contingent on you guys rezoning it, and if it's a good thing for the village, of course, we'll rezone it. We, we rezoned the area a, a, across the other side for the travel center. So I'm completely against this whole concept until they bring us more, something more firm.
I would agree with that a hundred percent, because in my experience, whenever you get a preliminary drawing like this, obviously, you want to sell the sizzle, and what Pat's saying is, once we approve that, then we open ourselves up for.
They can put anything in there.
Whatever.
Anything that conforms with, with, automatically.
Hand them a blank check. Another question I had, too, I was always under the impression you could only, yeah, I'd only allow one turn-in in that parcel of property, and I see you've got two there.
Yeah, the one on the east end is a right in, right out, so.
Will they allow that?
I'm assuming they will, a lot of times they allow right in, right outs, and they're not considered the same, so.
I, I don't know, I, I don't think they will, but maybe you're right.
And this is a county highway, so IDAP won't have a say in it, but Will County Department.
Have you noticed a strategic arch around?
It, it's Will County Department of Transportation's route, though, so.
Any other discussion?
You don't have to, if it just falls, well, they made some motion, it just falls.
I will say the zoning, uh, the staff's report recommended rezoning of this, and it con, uh, conforms with the, the village's comp plan, so.
Agreed.
So staff didn't make that recommendation, the planning commission, planning is on, they should do it just to be.
The staff recommended conditions placed on it, sorry.
Did they send a report?
Yeah, this one.
Yeah, then go ahead and make the motion.
I make a motion and we deny the planning and zoning.
Second.
Uh, moved by trustee Bowden, seconded by trustee Jones to, uh, deny the request for rezoning.
Trustee Bowden?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Sturba?
Yes.
So, it's not that we're against development there, just to make sure you, um, you know, but we want the right development and, so we'd love to have a conversation with the developers themselves. So I'll just maybe report that back to them. All right, moving on, uh, item M, ordinance approving request for special use permit for a two-family dwelling unit in the R-three, one-family residence district at four forty East Crawford. This would be ordinance twenty-three, do we go to oh seven and continue?
Yeah, it would be twenty-three oh seven, because you're not, you didn't go on the other one.
Yeah. Okay, so this went before the planning commission, uh, was unanimously approved, it's an existing two-family dwelling unit, um, that needs a special use, so it was being, uh, sold to a new owner, so they get to come in to get another special use.
What does the special use entail?
Uh, that allows them to have a two-family dwelling unit in a R-three.
Oh, so because they're new, they have to come and get this, even though it's already a two.
Yes, so the special use only goes with the owner, every time it changes, they get a special.
Uh, the owner, do you have any questions?
Okay.
What was your question?
Anybody else?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by trustee Hudson, second by trustee Moravka, uh, ordinance twenty-three dash oh seven.
Trustee Bowden?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Slus?
Yes.
Trustee Sturba?
Yes.
All right, next, uh, item N, ordinance approving request for special use permit for Hardcore Hammers LLC at twelve oh one Teal Street. Um, this also went before the planning and zoning commission and, uh, was unanimously approved. Uh, this, uh, company is going to occupy the, uh, I guess you'd call warehouse building, uh, behind the Circle K, uh, at least, uh, half of it and, um, what is the special use for, why do they need a special use?
Because they, this is in a B-three and it is more like fabrication and there'll be painting in there, so there's a provision in B-three, uh, that this type of use would be a special use. Just to make sure that we could regulate any noise or nuisance.
Perfect. Questions from the board?
Cause I read it, it said it's not gonna be a noise.
Every, yeah, everything's done inside, correct?
Yeah, everything's inside there.
How long have you been in business?
Uh, they've been in business for thirteen years, I just acquired a controlling interest in it just, uh, as of the first of the year.
Where is the headquarters?
Um, they're, they were out of Hillsboro, Illinois. They're moving, moving operations fully to here, we're downsizing a little bit, we don't need some space, and we owned an eighteen thousand square foot building in Hillsboro, so I lived here for about twenty years, so, and I have some, some businesses in other, other communities, I, I had the opportunity, I saw that space, I'm like, well, this'll be perfect, so I love, love the opportunity to, to possibly be able to bring one here to Peatone, so.
How many people do you employ?
Um, as of right now, there's about five full-time employees, um, you know, that will probably grow a little bit over time, some of our employees are home-based, um, customer service and whatnot, um, some are, some will be located there. The, the space is about five thousand square feet, about half is office, about half is, uh, warehouse, um, production space, so it'll give us some, some space to, uh, to grow into as we need.
What kind of volume do you do there?
Um, um, dollar, dollar-wise, we do about three million dollars a year in the product of twenty-twenty-two.
Is that a retail or wholesale?
Um, we, we, most of our stuff is direct to consumer, we are in a few sporting stores, we're in the, the chain of Shields stores, um, but a lot of our, probably, almost ninety percent is actually direct to consumer, um, through e-commerce. Um, we do also do stuff for a lot of companies, but they do a lot of, there's, uh, giveaways, like one of our big companies is, uh, customers is Dickies, they do a lot of, uh, custom, custom engraved hammers, Heckles and McCoy, um, we do some stuff for Costco, some stuff for Walmart Transport. Um, we, Amazon's another place we actually sell on, which is one of the reasons we chose the, wanted to stay close in this area with the, the main, one of the main distribution hubs in Moni, so we can actually deliver a lot of stuff to ourselves, just to save on shipping costs for the stuff that they're warehousing, so we sell a lot of stuff on Amazon, so.
So, if somebody orders a hammer on Amazon for you, does it, is it gonna, is the sale tax, sales tax gonna come from here or is it gonna go to Moni because you're, you're selling through Amazon?
Um, so it depends on where the person lives, the stuff through Amazon will, or, or everything, whether they buy it from us or they buy it from Amazon, it depends on where they live, so if they, they, if they are a, a, an Illinois address, then we collect the Illinois tax and conduct, collect the Peatone end of it and everything, as if it's from our facility.
Right.
In every other state, it's based on the state, and Amazon takes care of that, that for us, um, but it's all, it's all basically based on where the person lives.
You ship worldwide?
Yeah, uh, we mainly, mainly just, uh, Canada, a lot of Australia, New Zealand, um, little bit to different parts of Europe, the funny thing is some of the, some of the best axes in the world are made, made in Sweden, uh, but, uh, for some reason, the Swedish like our, like our product better, so, and, and it costs them more because obviously for their stuff, when their stuff comes here, it's more expensive than ours, when our stuff goes there, it's way more expensive, but Canada's really big for us, um, uh, like I said, a little bit of Europe, but New Zealand and, uh, Australia are probably the, some of the biggest markets, uh, is that what it's here?
Do it from there, where people can come in?
Nope, not, not at this time, no.
Uh, what, state your name again?
Uh, Steve Schaubacher.
Yeah.
We've always offered factory tours, we have some people that'll stop by the, the place down in Hillsboro, and, and certainly always welcome people in, but we don't really do anything retail, so, but we do offer if someone wants to come and pick up an order, if they're local, they wanna stop by and pick it up and save the freight, then we always let people do that, that's pretty minimal, couple, one or two.
I know there's a lot of carpenters that are around here and stuff like that, so I just didn't know.
Yeah, 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 we'd love to do that someplace, uh, someplace else, maybe have like a little retail store, a little show off the, the products and something, something else locally, whether that's the, you know, the right spot for, or maybe some opens up, maybe downtown or something like that, but.
So are you moving from Hillsboro over here?
Yes, yes.
Any other questions? Okay.
Motion, second.
Uh, so this, moved by trustee, uh, Moravka, second by trustee Slus, this will be ordinance twenty-three dash oh eight, approving request for special use permit for Hardcore Hammers.
Trustee Bowden?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Slus?
Yes.
Trustee Sturba?
Yes.
All right, uh, now I need a motion to go into executive session, uh, we've got two items, one is the, uh, appointment, employment compensation, discipline, uh, performance or dismissal of specific employees of a public body and then also, uh, purchase of real property. I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Slus, second by trustee Jones.
Trustee Bowden?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Slus?
Yes.
Trustee Sturba?
Yes.
All right, um, before we go, uh, any questions to press? Okay, there will, will not be any action after our executive session.